Good evening, everyone. Today, we're going to open our meeting with a prayer and pledge led by Councilmember Clint Bryant.
Let's pray, everyone. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful fall day that you've given us. We ask that you would be with the city employees today and everyone in our community. Father, keep them safe. Watch over us tonight as we deliberate on the city business and help us to stay humble and take ourselves out of the equation, Father God, and work in the best interests of this city. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Pro Tem Plaak.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning is excused. We have seven members present and two excused.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to remind the audience to remain quiet during the course of today's discussion with council and to refrain from speaking or otherwise interrupting. And I ask everyone to turn off or silence all electronic devices so we don't have interruptions unnecessary like I have had in the past. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor, we are at the announcements, and I'd like everyone to be aware that tomorrow at 4:00 PM is the last day to register to vote or to change your address. The records as of tomorrow, October 9th, is what is determined where you will vote on Election Day, November 6th. Also, City Council has rescheduled their November council meetings to Monday, November 5th and Monday, November 26th. Both meetings began at 6:30 PM. And a revised agenda has been distributed. The revision adds the reappointment of Greg Branch to the MBS Airport Commission, and it corrects the term ending date to October 31st, 2022, for both reappointments. Our next item is a proclamation designating October 7th through the 13th of 2018 as Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This, we would ask Ralph Martin, Fire Marshal, to step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my honor today to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, according to the National Fire Protection Association, statistics show that four out of five fire deaths occur in the home. And whereas three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in home fires by 50%. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention. As a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us all to look for places that fire can start, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and learn two ways out of each room. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, does hereby proclaim the week of October 7th through 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Saginaw, and urge all residents of the city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2018 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Saginaw Fire Department. In witness were of, Dennis Browning, Mayor, has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this eighth day of October in the year of our Lord 2008. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, councilpersons Floyd Clock, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Humphries, John Millen, and Brenda F. Moore, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. Congratulations. Please step forward.
Please say a few words if you would like to.
Please, okay. Good evening. As was just said by Mayor Pro Tem, we really have some work to do. Just looking at the stats, I left something for you. Maybe you can look at some Michigan fatal fire statistics, January through September 2018. There have been 91 fire deaths in the state of Michigan. That's just in 68 fires. That number is up 23% from last year at this time. So just from what we just read and what was just said in our proclamation, we do have work to do. And I'm sure with the work and with the cooperation of the citizens of Saginaw, we will get this endeavor done. As was said, this is Look, Listen, and Learn campaign highlights the three steps Saginaw residents can take to avoid home fires. Look, listen, and learn. Situational awareness is a skill we need, and we can use wherever we go. No matter where you are, always look for exits. If alarm sounds, take it serious. Exit the building immediately. Never use your own stove or stove top and oven as a source to heat your home. We've had quite a few instances where that occurs. Carbon monoxide can be produced in your home. Just being negligent, the heat can also cause structural fires, and it's just something you just don't want to do. You're putting yourself in harm's way. Never use your oven or stove top as a source to heat your home. Always remove the lint from your dryers, clothes dryers, after every use. Many times, the clothes dryers build up a lot of lint. That's something that can actually cause a structural fire. Make sure you remove the lint out of your screens of your clothes dryers after every use. And always, but one of the main reasons we've had quite a few structural fires in the city of Saginaw are from space heaters. Weather's getting cold, may not be ready to turn that heater on, there's the furnace on just yet. You turn to your space heater, always make sure those space heaters are at least three feet away from anything that will burn, anything combustible, paper, cloth, wood. Never leave them on when you're not around, when you leave home. Make sure they're turned off. Never leave them on while you're sleeping as well. Space heaters have been the cause of many structural fires in the city of Saginaw, and we would like to get, that's any type of problem that we can resolve and we can solve by just being more safe. I think that's something that we can all work together and make sure that the city is educated to know that that's something that can be addressed and maybe eliminated. And last but not least, always make sure those working, those smoke detectors that you have in your home are working smoke detectors. There's no sense in having a smoke detector if it isn't not a working smoke detector. Test them every month. We encourage you to get the 10-year units. That way, you don't have to worry about changing batteries every year. But make sure every smoke alarm in your home, which should be on at least every level and in every sleeping quarters, every sleeping area, should be working smoke detectors. Thank you very much. Hope to see each and every one of you at our awards ceremony tomorrow, 2:00, Central Station, 801 Federal. And I think we have a nice surprise for everyone. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a proclamation designating October 21st through the 27th, 2018, as Pro Bono Week.
And it's my pleasure to welcome Dan Stricka of the Saginaw County Bar Association to come to the podium to receive this proclamation. Whereas access to justice is a fundamental and essential right to a democratic society, however, countless citizens cannot afford the legal representation that they need to protect their lives, properties, and natural liberties. And whereas each year, volunteer attorneys donate thousands of hours of pro bono time and expert knowledge to these vulnerable populations, the invaluable contributions of pro bono attorneys help to ensure and protect a just society for every citizen. And whereas few other professions are in a position to offer this specialized assistance, and in doing so, these volunteer attorneys substantially enhance the distribution of justice and equality throughout our community. And whereas the Saginaw County Bar Association is joining with the American Bar Association to designate October 21st through the 27th, 2018, National Pro Bono Week, and to highlight the need for pro bono services during these challenging economic times. During this week, we celebrate the outstanding work of pro bono lawyers who volunteer their services throughout the year. And whereas the energy generated by the National Pro Bono Celebration is a powerful force that helps to build a just legal system that will result in equal access to justice for all, we support the efforts to ensure all people receive adequate representation and protection in the legal system regardless of their economic standing. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, does hereby proclaim October 21st through the 27th, 2018, as Pro Bono Week in the city of Saginaw, and urges all citizens of Saginaw to recognize the contributions of pro bono work in our community. We recognize this generous effort and the pro bono lawyers who serve our communities, strengthen our justice system, and support the rule of law. In witness were of, Dennis D. Browning has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this eighth day of October in the year of our Lord 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, councilmembers Floyd Clock, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Humphries, John Millen, and Brenda F. Moore, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. Please step forward and start with the fire.
If you'd like, you can give a few words.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clock and John Humphries, I don't want to preach to the choir since you two are on the honor roll, if I recall, from skimming it for the pro bono awards. As a Legal Services of Eastern Michigan Board Member and as a former staff attorney there, every year, we would represent indigent and other minority clients, and I alone would represent or advise up to 700 people a year, the vast majority of them in Saginaw County, and a significant minority of them right here in the city of Saginaw. And I was just doing the housing. And I was not enough. If it wasn't for pro bono attorneys such as Mayor Pro Tem Clock and John Humphries, we wouldn't be able to stay afloat and to help members of the community. That's why Pro Bono Week is so important. It not only praises the work that these gentlemen and other attorneys do in the city and in the county, but it also encourages other attorneys to do the same. I had the pleasure, well, and privilege approximately two weeks ago, to go to the soup kitchen with Mr. Humphries. And one Saturday morning, in three hours, we served 410 people right here in the city. So without, and we were also doing a housing clinic at the time to advise the homeless and the misfortunate of their housing rights right here in the city. So I encourage everyone, if they want to attend the pro bono luncheon, to do so, to support and praise those attorneys who do good work, and hopefully get a few more on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is public input.
At this time, I would advise everyone that we welcome your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. We ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council members so we can give consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Madam Clerk?
Our speaker tonight is Irie Sample.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Irie Sample. I'm a 48-year-old resident of Saginaw, Michigan, 2400 Hazelwood is my address in the city. I'm also a U.S. military veteran, served in West Germany, three years, '89 and '92. I'm just coming to you today, you probably remember me from over a year ago with the Ojibwe Island debate on Sundays. I worked with the city and the Saginaw Police Department to get a resolution to that, and we came up with something that was good for the community, and everybody worked together. So today, I'm just here to talk about my entrepreneur, and I sat down and I thought about a lot of the things that was going on in the city that was kind of negative, especially in the inner city. A lot of the residents feel like they've been forgot about. And while I was sitting at home thinking about all of that, I came up with this design on my shirts, and I put, I thought it would bring some positivity to the city. Take that sag nasty, as you probably heard, off our city, because there's nothing nasty about our city. I really love it. I was born and raised here. So when I created these shirts, I was like shocked, because it was like the whole, from every ethnic group and cultural background, they supported it. And it's just simply saying, I'm so Saginaw. And they was grabbing onto it. You know, that showed me that the city was, they want to grab onto something, and they grabbed onto it tough. I mean, it's, it's been, the support has been outstanding. And I just wanted to present it to the council as something to, if you see something positive in it and bring a positive outlook on our city, I would like for you to take a look at it and get behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Sample. We appreciate your support.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Our next order of business is remarks of council.
And today, we start with Councilmember Balls.
Thank you. Again, the citizens, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the city council meeting today, and I'd like to thank Mr. Martin for his service to the city as a fireman, bringing these good things to us about fire safety. I think Mr. Martin slipped on his thing when I told him I, he was a board member of a Saginaw school board, and he slipped a little bit, so he let him know he's going to be doing a good job there too that day. But my remarks, I wanted to say something about the NWACP meeting, NWACP meeting, that happened a couple of weeks ago. The National NWACP has an image award at their banquet, and the image that was put on at that dinner was really magnificent. We had a lot of children who had came back from college and got awards there, and some of them are spokespeople or HR managers for Coca-Cola Bowling Company, Ms. Wilson's granddaughter, and a lot of other students who come back at doctor's degrees. Some people are authors. A couple of gentlemen even come back and are working at Delta College. So I just wish that we could keep our youth in our city and bring that light here instead of them going away. Hopefully, we can start keeping them here if we got good things for them to do in the city of Saginaw. I'm sure they will stay, so we all need to work on that. Mr. Sample, I want to thank you too for the, for what happened at Ojibwe Island last year, that you talked to the police officers and you got them to keep the park open, and you guys even helped keeping the park clean and keep away a lot of the bad element that comes to the park. I want to thank you for that. When you said you want to present these T-shirts, I thought that meant that you were going to present us with a T-shirt. So we, I guess we have to work on that. But thank you anyway, man. It's real positive thing. We're not nasty. We are a good city, and we're coming along a lot better. It may have looked a little nasty when we were tearing down all them houses, but it's looking a lot better now. So another thing, the gentleman came in and talked about Pro Bono Week. I just happened to be scanning through the internet the other day, and I came upon an older guy by the latest name of Humphries that works at the soup kitchen. He used to be a lawyer. And I kept reading about it, kept reading about it, and I said, I sit next to his son. So I called him up and talked to him, and he told me they have four generations of lawyers that have been here in the city of Saginaw. That's a beautiful thing to talk about keeping youth in our city. It is, we have four generations of lawyers from the Humphries family that's still here in the city of Saginaw and serving us on the city council. I think that's a beautiful thing, and I wanted to personally tell you thank you for your service to the city of Saginaw. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balls. I should mention, which I forgot in the study, that there is a three-minute limit for council members' comments. So next, Councilmember, Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Clock. I have two things I wanted to mention tonight. And the first one, I am fairly certain, but in case I'm wrong, I'm going to thank the Riverfront Commission and the Northwest Timmets, the Downtown Development Association. I have seen popping up all over the Riverfront District, the Saginaw logo bike racks. They are multicolored, they have our favorite Saginaw logo, and they're making quite an impression. So I wanted to let people know to look for those. They're pretty much all up and down the river. So a very good project. The other thing I wanted to mention to get perhaps people thinking about it a little more, it's something's been mentioned here in council before, the side lot program through the land bank. I find this program working very well. I've had two personal contacts where I spoke with people, suggested they might want to get the property next door, and within a month, they owned it. And that property is back on the tax rolls, and the six-foot weeds are down, and it's becoming useful property again. So I think if all of us who sit up here and department heads for the city who are in attendance, if we talk this program up, it works. So please keep mentioning that to people. And the cost is practically negligible. It's usually $150 and a $10 filing fee. And if you're lucky enough, sometimes you get a property that includes an accessory building like a garage, so you have a place to put your lawn equipment, everything you're going to use to maintain the property. Those tend to cost a little more, but they have a lot of utility for them then. And that's the two things I wanted to mention tonight. Also, very interesting design on the T-shirts, Mr. Sample. I look forward to seeing those around the neighborhood more.
Councilman?
Good afternoon. I'd like to congratulate the attorney he led and Fire Marshal and Chief Van Lu. Excellent job. Excellent job. I'll be at the program tomorrow for sure. Mr. Sample, I need purple. I need purple. My favorite color is purple, and I'm on, I will be representing the city of Saginaw lost in LA. It will be my first appearance for Michigan Municipal League, the 7th through the 12th. So I need a couple shirts and some hats so that while I'm walking, I can represent Saginaw in a positive way. So we need to get together. I had the opportunity to go to a funeral on, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday for Bishop Williams. It was a most humble, most humble funeral that I've been to in a long time, to see how a man sacrificed so much in his life to give back to the community. People came from all over the United States, and it was just phenomenal. On last night, yesterday, my day was full of church, and you know I'm churchy, so that's cool for me. But I went to a church last night, and I didn't want to leave, but I had another appointment. The Christ Image, and I'm probably saying it wrong, Ms. McGregor, so please forgive me, they burnt their mortgage in the City of Light, okay? I'll get it right. I went to them last night, representing the city as well, and they burnt their mortgage. To go into that building across from the library on Jefferson was phenomenal. It was just phenomenal. I didn't realize how beautiful that building was. And to go into an establishment that was full of all denominations, that was really, really something impressive. So I'm encouraging everybody to start, let's reach out to one another, because we can make a better city if we do what we need to do. When I go to Los, when I go to Los Angeles next week in November, I plan to represent the city well. So when I go, all my Saginaw people go with me, and it's not sag nasty, it's 989 Saginaw. So, you know, I just wanted to say that. And I too went to the NWACP dinner with Councilmember Balls and Mayor Pro Tem and everybody else. And it was a phenomenal affair, and we did have young people who came back to Saginaw to represent that they started here, but they moved on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Clint Bryant?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you to Fire Marshal Ralph Martin. If we don't hear you on the radio, we're seeing you in person. Worked for the school district for 10 years. Rain, snow, hail or sleet, I think the postal service might need to change because I see that smokehouse at every school, every school, I'm telling you. So thank you so much. Thank you to the attorneys who participate in Pro Bono Week. We sometimes on council have to refer folks to Legal Services of Eastern Michigan as we're out and about in the community, so their work is definitely invaluable. Both of them. We're Sam, Irie Sample. How you doing, sir? Good to see you here in council chambers under something good. Thank you so much. I've seen your design all over social media. Every time I open my newsfeed, I'm seeing I'm so Saginaw, I'm so Saginaw, I'm so Saginaw. So before you leave tonight, make sure you, actually, I can meet with you. I want to get you a couple Saginaw pins as well, just to represent our community. So thank you so much for the work that you did. I know you put time into it, and you've really been out there mobilizing people about something good. And I know the work that you've done activating for parks in the community and making sure that they're accessible to everyone and even cleaning up some of those parks. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do, and we look for it. I'm going to need a big size, but like I said, I'll contact you later about that. I just wanted to highlight two businesses. One is business owners. Mr. Tim Apple, he owns a company not located in the city, but he has a passion for the city. At the beginning of the school year, he helped participate, collected donations for hundreds of students within the city of Saginaw, making sure that they had shoes to wear. So this winter is coming, it's, the weather's kind of crazy. Sometimes it's warm, sometimes it's cold, but Mr. Apple is getting together a board. He's going to do a 501(c)(3), and it's going to be called Best Foot Forward. So we're going to be collecting donations for mittens and also for boots. So we had about 500 students who benefited from his first endeavor, and we're hoping that we can get some more donations from the community so nobody has to have cold feet, our students in Saginaw schools. Also, I wanted to let everyone know, we have a new business that opened formerly, the Michigan Coney Island Court, and I believe it's Woodbridge Mason, excuse me, Mason. They've opened, it's the new TNT concession. The owner is Toy Rosas. They had their grand opening this week. We had proclamations from the state, from the county, and the cities is forthcoming. So we want to make sure that we patronize, shop local as much as possible, so please visit them and let them know that you appreciate everything they do. Oh, that's a quick three minutes.
All right. It's still, all we can do is three minutes today. Councilman Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's so good to be all with you tonight. I just want to mimic all of my, all my other council people. Um, I just want to mimic all of my, of, all my other council people and congratulate the fire department on all of their hard work. I'm looking forward to being at the open house tomorrow. Um, I know that you all go to so many neighborhood associations and are so good at listening to the people. I just think that's so important to keep you all grounded and it's just so great to see you out all the time. Um, Saginaw Bar Association and Councilman John Humphries, I'm so glad to hear that there's so much, uh, legal service available to people, uh, that would otherwise have no options. And I know that that's really life-changing and, and I thank you for your service. Um, uh, just to, uh, talk a little bit more, I know, uh, that Ms. Santos, uh, covered that tomorrow is the last day to register, but I also just want to say that now is a good time to start thinking about, um, all of the small things on the ballot that we need to remember to vote for. So I just wanted to remind you that there's this wonderful tool on the Secretary of State website that allows you to actually look at what your ballot will look like, including all of the ballot proposals, which we have a few that are important. And then also, all the way on the back, there's some things that, uh, may get forgotten because we don't have straight ticket voting this time. And so I just hope that you go ahead and take a look at that voter information center on the Secretary of State website and just review your ballot ahead of time so that you are totally ready when it comes time to vote. Um, and then I also just want to say your T-shirts are awesome and I am so glad to see them on a couple people here and I know that, that I'm going to be seeing them on a lot more. And so, uh, the more positive stuff we can say about our city, the better we are. And, uh, and I look forward to, to seeing much more positive, um, in the form of your shirts and lots of other things. So thank you for, for bringing that to us tonight. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Humphries.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, to the fire department, kudos. Uh, I will be unable to make it tomorrow. Uh, it'll, I wish I could be there, but I cannot. Uh, but I will be there in spirit. Uh, Mr. Sample, uh, you heard me joking a little bit before the meeting about, you know, sometimes you wish you had that idea. And when I saw that T-shirt come through the door, I thought, "I wish I had that idea." Now, did I hear that there are hats available too? Or, or is that, uh, the?
Just coming.
Okay, very good, very good. Because, you know, sometimes large sizes are hard to come by in T-shirts, so, um, hats work well. Uh, wonderful idea. Uh, it's way better than getting nine-eight-nine tattooed across your throat. I'm in favor of that. Uh, I think what Mr. Straka had to say and, and some of what I've heard also, uh, this evening, kind of was a nice segue into one of the things I wanted to mention. And that is the Eastside Soup Kitchen fundraiser that will be taking place a week from tonight. Uh, there will be, uh, it's referred to as a Michigan Sampler. Uh, it will be an auction, there will be good food, um, and it will be out at the Swan Valley Convention Center. Uh, last year it was, it was at the Castle Museum, which was wonderful and great, but I actually think that we needed, uh, more people, uh, than were available, or we needed more space than was available for the people that were there. Uh, Mr. Straka did say, uh, 410 people last Saturday, September 29th. Uh, the bar association does do the fifth breakfast, uh, every, well, through four months or so. We've got five Saturdays in a month and the bar association provides the, the food prep and, and servers. 410 people tells you that there are still issues, that there are still people who need help, that there are still people who rely upon, uh, an organization such as the Soup Kitchen, uh, for food. So if it's within your heart, um, the fundraiser, uh, will be Monday, the 15th, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30. Uh, tickets are available through the Soup Kitchen. Uh, they have a pretty good phone number, seven-five-five-Food or seven-five-five-three-six-six-three. They also have a, a presence online, eastsidesoup kitchen dot org and a Facebook page. Dawn Morell, who ran Dawn of a New Day for many years, now runs the Soup Kitchen doing a bang-up job. Uh, but there is need, so please consider that. Uh, and I think that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do want to say, Mr. Sample, without re, repeating everything, I just want to say thank you for inspirational effort somebody has for the city. It's very helpful. Uh, next, I want to mention two credit unions that are based in Saginaw. The Family First Credit Union and the Team One Credit Union have partnered to bring an economist, Paul Trob, who is a member of the Detroit branch of the Federal Reserve Bank in a, in Chicago, to our Great Lakes region. On October 9th, tomorrow, he will be given a pair of, uh, of presentations on the U.S. economy, job creation, retention, and international trade and tariffs at 12:30 and 2:30 at Saginaw Valley State University in the Rio Miller Hall. If anyone's interested, uh, it is open to the public. The 12:30 is probably the, um, the, the one that would be best for everyone to attend. The 2:31 is actually aimed more to the students and the issues they'll be facing. But either one of them is open to the public and, uh, given that it's our city credit unions bringing in, it would be good if we could show that support, uh, of, of the city for them. Um, just a little on Mr. Trob. He's a senior business economist at the Detroit branch of the Federal Reserve Bank. His responsibilities include both research and current analysis and he is a contributing author to the books, The Michigan Economy and Midwest Economy Blog, excuse me, Blogs. Um, so the credit unions, uh, deserve a lot of credit for bringing this, uh, economist to us and I want everyone to know about it. Um, next, um, the, uh, fire department. We've mentioned the fire awards ceremony tomorrow and I do want to make sure that, uh, everyone's aware of that as our prior, other council members have mentioned it and as Mr., um, our fire marshal also mentioned it. But what has, has not been mentioned is that the Saginaw Fire Department has been awarded the 2018 Leland Gayhart Fire Safety and Prevention Award from U of M, U of M's Trauma Burn Center. It's presented each year to the fire department in the state of Michigan that has an, had an impact on prevention and fire safety in their community. And this year, the Saginaw Fire Department has been recognized for all their fire prevention activities, just like you heard today with the proclamation and with, uh, Fire Marshal, uh, Marshall's comments. Uh, it, the fire department is focused on fire prevention. It's really important. That award will be presented tomorrow at the Saginaw Fire Department's, uh, Fire Awards Ceremony. So that's another reason to attend if you can. And, uh, finally, we have a business expo coming up. The Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, the SEDC, is presenting, presented a small business expo on October 25, 2018 at 5:00 to 8:00 P.M.[1064.13][1064.13](laughter)
You might have to revisit that three minutes.
Five to eight P.M. Okay. Councilman.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Thank you, so.
I would also mention that, that the fire department awards ceremony is open to the public and they're having the awards ceremony and then, um, it's kind of an open house as well and the public is welcome to that. It's at Station 1, 801 Federal at 10 A.M. Also, you should have received an invitation, um, if you, uh, you may have missed it, it's, um, regarding Hoyt Park Warming Station. The Hoyt Park Warming House is now listed in the State of Michigan Historic Building Registry. And October 11th, at 11 A.M., the Friends of Hoyt Park Committee will be hosting a special ceremony at Hoyt Park in recognition of this significant honor. Members from the Michigan Historical Commission, which is part of the Department of Natural Resources, will also be in attendance on October 11th for the presentation of the marker commemorating the 80-year-old historic building. So congratulations to the Friends of Hoyt Park for getting that designated historic building. I also, uh, wanted to mention, uh, last meeting, I, I talked a little bit about Community Ventures. Um, that was, uh, because I knew they were getting an award, um, in Atlanta. So the Community Ventures Program, which helps people who are structurally unemployed get back to work, has received national recognition from the International Economic Development Council. Lieutenant Governor Brian Callie announced, uh, Callie and the Saginaw Future Incorporated accepted the Gold Excellence in Economic Development Award in the Equity and Inclusion category at the IEDC Annual Conference in Atlanta today. So that was accepted by the Lieutenant Governor, Governor and Joy and Crary from Saginaw Future. So I think that illustrates, uh, the role that she played in that program, uh, in the state. And, um, I think that the Saginaw region has been one of the most successful areas with that program throughout the state of Michigan. Also, um, the Officer of the Month for October is Officer Terrence Moore. So he does a lot of work with the youth in the city. He's always at the school events and, um, he, he relates very well to, uh, youth, um, in the space program. So congratulations to Officer Moore. Uh, the, um, I would also, uh, encourage everyone to attend the Small Business Expo. It is five to eight, as Mayor Protem mentioned. It's free to the public. So there's a lot of great opportunities with the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation who is sponsoring this event. They have a lot of newer programs, some micro loans, and, um, if you are interested in that, I encourage you to attend that. And, um, if also, uh, council members would like to learn more about SEDC, this is a great opportunity to do that so that you can take that information out to the public. And finally, um, Councilman Mill mentioned the bike racks. Uh, the DDA, um, did contribute to paying for those bike racks and that is also a Saginaw County Parks and Recreation Project there. Brian Leckel, um, came up with that idea and presented it to the DDA and some other groups for funding. Um, those bike racks are being put out by, um, city and county staff. I think there's about another dozen or so going out in the next couple days. So, um, great project, I agree, and those are, are pretty nice bike racks to have around the city. We do have two presentations, uh, this evening, so I don't want to delay that any farther, uh, further. Michelle McGregor from the First Ward Community Center, she is the executive director and she's working on, um, getting the First Ward Community Center set up as an Envision Center program. So we wanted to invite her to council this evening to update the rest of council about what this project is all about. We, uh, the mayor, Mayor Protem and I have already met with her, so welcome her up to the podium.
Good afternoon, well, good evening, afternoon. I thought that was for me.[1346.13][1346.13](laughter) Because I can't see. Okay, here you go. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Michelle McGregor and I'm the executive director of First Ward Community Center here in Saginaw. And I am here to share about the Envision Center. I do want to thank you all for your time and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, city manager, for meeting with me and, uh, looking forward to sharing this information with you all. But I don't want to do that first. Um, I would like to honor my board members that are here, if they would wave their hands and say hello. We have, um, Robert Johnson, Alvernis Johnson, and Teresa Stitt, uh, with me. So I'm not out here by myself. Envision Center, what is an Envision Center? The Envision Center is actually part of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is, uh, called HUD. And, um, I'm here to just share that we have an opportunity to have an Envision Center in our area. But first, let me share a little bit about First Ward Community Center. First Ward has been in existence for the past 87 years. So over 87 years, First Ward has been impacting the city of Saginaw and the residents of Saginaw County. Um, the picture that you see here is our current facility, which is 32,000 square feet building, um, in addition to the land and other properties that we have on the premises of First Ward Syracuse. First Ward was actually established in 1929, which is now known by the Junior League of Saginaw County. They started it. And in 1931, we were incorporated with a nine, a five-on-one C3. Our vision is that we want to be a provider of range of services that transition the lives of youth and adults to, from dependency to self-sufficiency. This is First Ward, um, in its heyday, all right here to the left, and our current facility to the right. And also, we have a list of our programs that we offer, uh, from after-school programming to high school programming. Um, I want to thank the city of Saginaw for partnering with First Ward, uh, for our eighth year, seventh year of our summer youth employment program. This year, we were actually able to employ 48 youth, uh, this summer. So thank you, Phil, and your, um, and your team, uh, for working with us. Uh, we also have a Senior Citizen Center, prevention education, we have a community kitchen, um, and we have tons of volunteer opportunities. Our motto is that we always want to make a positive difference in people's lives. And so, um, in your packet, I have provided for you all 10 ways that, um, First Ward had made an impact in, um, 2017. Uh, we're currently, um, offering the Get in the Hair Program and we've already graduated three cohorts, where we have four certified trainers for the Get in the Hair Program and one certified trainer for the Bridges Out of Poverty in Arrows. We've served over 5,637 hot meals in the adult kitchen. And that's any adult between the ages of 18 and older that can come and have a meal with us Monday through Thursday. And then following, we have 5,654 hot meals for our after-school program and summer day camp. That's a lot of meals. That's a lot of children, that's a lot of adults. And we're very proud to actually, um, to be able to do that. On a weekly basis, uh, we had a total of over 681,000 pounds of food that we distribute with one of our partners, Inflim. There's other many achievements that we have at First Ward. These are just a few that we do, but daily, we celebrate the, the triumph of First Ward in our community and our residents. First Ward, um, and the Saginaw Housing Commission, we currently have forged a partnership in regards to, um, the Envision Center. The Saginaw Housing, uh, Commission is a HUD agency which provides family self-sufficiency program currently, which helps make us eligible to actually receive the title of a Envision Center. We, our target audience are the neighbors, will be the neighbors of the Town and Garden Homes off Norman, as well as is open to any residents in Saginaw County. So what is an Envision Center? An Envision Center is, right now, in the beginning stages. In December 2017, Secretary Ben Carson actually unveiled the very first Envision Center in Detroit, Michigan. And that's where he was from. And so, right now, currently, there are 17, uh, Envision Centers throughout the nation that are in a pilot demonstration phase for the next three to five years. Our enrollment and our submission for application for the Envision Center will allow us to be a part of the pilot, um, pilot phase where we will actually commit to five years of being an Envision Center in our area. You probably want to know what are the, some of the benefits of being a, uh, Envision Center. Well, First Ward, right now, currently, we have over 100 collaborative partners that we work with on a daily, on a daily and yearly basis. And so that's a lot of partners that we work with. We, right now, currently, help individuals from, uh, with utility assistance, um, housing, counseling, after-school program, education, we do it all. And so this Envision Center will allow us to actually have a greater, larger scope of range of services and more partners that we can partner with for our county. I know that when I came to Saginaw, I'm not originally from Saginaw, I'm from Detroit, and, um, be, started my employment at First Ward, uh, working with youth, it was difficult sometimes because we had silos. This will eliminate silos in our community and actually have collaborative partners where we actually working together to help individuals become self-sufficient. Self-sufficient, and by definition, is actually that no, that a person has all the resources that they possibly need with no aid or support from any governmental assistance. Now, the Bible says that we will have the poor with us always. So that means that our programs, at First Ward, that we will still continue to do that. However, there are able-bodied individuals that are very interested in becoming self-sufficient. And so, and throughout the Envision Center, we will provide those, uh, services, federal, state, and local governments, nonprofit agencies, faith-based agencies, and other agencies that are willing to come together to help our citizens become self-sufficient. We've already been working with a lot of, uh, bankers through the CRA Bankers Forum and we have, uh, funding from them. However, on a larger scale, we want to educate our residents that they can become homeowners. We know that right now, um, the Marshall Plan is, is actually rolling out, um, after being signed into law. into law by our governor, and the Marshall Plan would fit perfectly with the Envision Center, because it will ask, it will lend for an additional support for not only our city, but for our residents. The Envision Center mission is to empower Americans to lead self-sufficient lives. And the vision is to, is to connect low-income households with a variety of resources and tools that offer pathways to economic opportunity and self-sufficiency. The Vision Center has four pillars of opportunity: economic empowerment, educational advancement, health and wellness, character and education. These are some of the things that we're already doing currently, right now, at First Ward, and it's also being done in our community. And so, you're wondering, how will we actually do this? Well, we do have a vehicle, and the vehicle will be considered, it will be used with Bridges Out of Poverty. It is a national organization called Aha Process, and they have over thirty, what, twenty-five years of research in helping individuals become self-sufficient, and actually breaking the cycle of poverty in cities throughout our nation. Our neighboring state of Ohio has been a model for this work that is being done for Bridges Out of Poverty. It is a training that anyone in our community can actually attend, to actually learn how individuals from poverty, middle class, and wealth can come together and actually solve prob, solve any problem as it relates to poverty. And so, the Get in the Hair Program is an excellent program. I said we have three cohorts. We also have the YWCA in our area that's, that are administering, administrating the Get in the Hair Program. And so, in doing the Get in the Hair Program, this vehicle build resources. This diagram here talks about ninety essential resources, and we are other, other thought that financial, financial assistance is not all that's needed for an individual to have resources. They need emotional resources, mental and cognitive, they need spiritual, they need to understand what the hidden rules are. That hidden rules are in every class. It also talks about support systems, physical health and well-being. All of these essentials, essential resources are important beyond financial. And so, the Envision Center will allow us to not only tackle and deal with financial issues and situations by helping them build their resources, but it will also allow them to become a whole and total person. This resource building, builder model, if you look in the middle, it says Sustainable Communities, and all around you have your education, higher ed, community, nonprofits, healthcare, criminal justice, and employers. Throughout this program, we will always discuss the four causes of poverty. There's not one particular reason why poverty exists. It is for special reasons. One is individual behaviors, community conditions, exploitation, and political and economic structures. And they all play a role, so that means that everyone's need to come to the table, so that we can have a conscious dialogue about how to honestly work together, looking at poverty through an economic lens, that will help everyone live in a very warm and safe environment, which is our city. The plan. Step one, First Ward partnered, has partnered with Saginaw Housing Commission and the city of Saginaw. Tonight, with a letter, a signature?
We have to present that at the end.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to see his smile. Step two, we gather the stakeholders to, and bring them to the table, and that's everyone that have an interest in our community. That's from our children, from businesses, everyone comes to the table. The third step is that we do a training on Bridges Out of Poverty, Get in the Hair and R-Rules for, for our stakeholders. Four, we will actually have a community assessment of the residents and the community, implement and evaluate the data. I am a firm believer that, that it's not my responsibility to dictate to anyone what their resources are, or to even tell them what they need to do in order to become self-sufficient. It is my responsibility, and I believe it's a responsibility of other agencies and organizations, to hear the individuals who need assistance and actually work with them to make sure that they have a plan that they can live with. And the fifth step will be an open house for the Envision Center at First Ward. We will be submitting our information pending this wonderful presentation to you all, and we look to hear back from HUD in regards to how we will proceed further in regards to bringing this Envision Center to our area. I believe that this Envision Center is one step towards a collective body, where we can actually have federal resources in our area that have to play together in the sandbox for the greater good of our community. That's important. And I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and if there's any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Madam Clerk, I'll sit down.
Questions of the council?
Oh, yes, questions. Are there any questions?
Yeah. You're looking like, I know you want to say something. Thank you so much, Ms. McGregor. The area again, is it the Daniel Heiss area that you're talking about? What's the Pacific area? Is this citywide? Is this just confined to a certain area?
No. I chose the Daniel Heiss area because they're public housing and they're how, they're HUD-assisted residents already, but it is open up to the city of Saginaw residents, as well as the county of Saginaw.
I know I asked right, since we need to take a look at the green zone again. It's a part of the green zone.
We are.
So, we may need to take a look again. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
In talking about additional federal resources that might become available, is most of this funding program-related, or is there also, for lack of a better term, a bricks and mortar component? Is there physical changes to the First Ward Center that would be part of this such that the services are delivered differently than, than the current setup?
No, we'll just be considered a community hub. It is pretty much, we will be considered the brick and mortar. One of the benefits of the Envision Center is that they actually have a mobile app that residents can actually plug into, in addition to coming to our building. It's not, no structural, anything. Their programs are already in existence, because the federal government already administrate the funds. It was just bringing all of the individuals and agencies to one area, where a resident can come and have a whole list at one-stop shop.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Don't have any questions, I just have a comment. Just want to thank Ms. McGregor for the work that you're doing for the First Ward Community Center.
Thank you.
Every time I know that you're doing that good work, I will continue to send my ninety-eight way funds to you guys.
We appreciate it.
Think I might reach it like forty years now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Ms. McGregor.
All right. You're welcome.
Ms. Manager?
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, for that presentation. And then, our second presentation this evening is regarding Public Act 202, which you may recall is outlines required funding levels for other post-employment benefits, as well as pension funds. And Dennis Jordan, our Director of Human Resources, giving an update on our plans that we are submitting to the Michigan Department of Treasury. Dennis?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Council. I promised everyone to keep this to fifteen minutes. And, I was kidding, it's going to be less than. Unfunded liability with the city of Saginaw and throughout the country, and state of Michigan has been a problem for a long, long time, and the city of Saginaw is no different regarding our unfunded liabilities when it comes to pension and retiree healthcare. Tonight's presentation basically is to give you some more background for Council Communications Number Three and Four today. Of course, we always take a look at what the, what the elephant in the room is, and unfortunately, it's, it is, and it always has been, unfunded liability, at least for both pension and healthcare. And we don't talk about it too much, but it's always there in the budget. Currently, the city of Saginaw pays about twenty-one million dollars for retiree healthcare and pensions. That's just going out. A good part of that comes out of our thirty-million-dollar general fund budget, so it is a problem. That's, that's just what we're paying as we're going along. That doesn't count as we're trying to pay down our healthcare and our pension liabilities. Again, it's throughout the United States, hits a lot of urban cities, those cities with employees, you know, that go back in the twenties and the thirties and the forties that have, are part of this pension system and the retiree healthcare system. The state of Michigan, under Snyder, about seven years ago, when he took office, one of the first things he did is he required the cities in Michigan to comply with an EVIP plan. It's a Economic Vitality Improvement Plan. Now, when he put that together, one of the things that he said, if you don't comply with that, it's going to affect your state share revenue directly. I mean, he said this is what it's going to do. Unfortunately, at that time, which made it very difficult, is he didn't give cities, municipalities, governments, any teeth to use when it comes to negotiating benefits with the labor unions. So, they said, you got to do this, and if you don't do it, we're going to, it's going to have an impact on your state share revenue. We put the plan together, and I think that was about three or four years, and then they kind of dropped that, and, you know, that mandate, and didn't pursue that any longer. The Public Act 202, as Tim had mentioned, it was enacted in December of two thousand seventeen, and basically, it was, it's there for Protection of Local Government Retirement Benefit Act. And it requires reporting, established reporting requirements for local governments, mainly the defined benefit and post-employment benefits, or we call, refer to it as OPEB, you'll hear that. Our post-employment benefits, probably ninety-nine percent of that goes to retiree healthcare. It's, so when we talk about OPEB, we're talking about retiree healthcare. One of the things I want to look at, and I'm going to take a look at these in two different phases. First, let's look at the pension. Just so you know, we have about eight hundred and fifty-three retirees out there. Currently, two hundred and twenty-eight active employees that still are eligible for the Defined Benefit Pension Plan. Some of those are included, the hybrid participants, that's a new plan we put in, but a hundred and sixty-nine of those actives are still in DB plan. Those are folks that are out there that if, if we were to try to negotiate any reductions in those benefits, those are the only ones that we could touch. We wouldn't be able to touch the eight hundred and fifty retirees that are out there already. The, or the total liability for the plan is three hundred and forty-six million dollars, and we are fifty-three percent funded today, which means we have assets of about a hundred and seventy-nine million, five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That means forty-seven percent of that is unfunded. That's the thing that we have to pay off, and that's about a hundred and fifty-five million dollars. That's what the unfunded liability that we have right now. We are projected, if we were to pay the contributions as outlined by the actuary, we could actually have this thing paid off in twenty-five years. However, if you take a look at this next slide, oops, I didn't even move that one. If you take a look at the next slide, take a look at those numbers. Right now, I think this year, we put in close to eleven million dollars budgeted for the pension system, which some of it goes for normal costs, the benefits of people that are drawing benefits, and some of it goes for the unfunded liability. If you'd look at those numbers right there, and I just did increments of six years, in two thousand nineteen, we would have to put in almost fourteen and a half million dollars. In two thousand twenty-five, we'd have to be putting in about eighteen million dollars. So, I don't know where this new revenue is going to come from to be able to pay these additional costs, but if we were able to do it by the year two thousand thirty-one, we would be sixty percent funded. So, those are the things that we're going to look at. Our objective is going, going to continue to make those contributions. We call them Act, Annual Required Contributions, or ARC. When I say ARC, it's Annual Required Contribution for our pension system. And lo and behold, if we keep going to two thousand forty-three, we'll be able to have it paid off at a hundred percent. PA 202 regarding pensions, basically, they're telling us that we have to have this thing funded at sixty percent in twenty years. And I just showed you the numbers, that we could get to that in about thirteen years if we're able to make those huge payments, those huge annual required contributions. So, our plan, as we look at it, and we're going to present some of these, some of these requirements for the plan that they're putting out there, may be unrealistic, what they're asking for, our legislators. But that is going to be our goal, and it's going to be our plan. One of the other things that they suggested, that if you couldn't do the sixty percent in twenty years, then if you could get, if your annual required contributions would fall less than ten percent from all governor, government-funded revenues. Now, what's interesting about that is that what's not included in government-funded revenues is the enterprise funds, the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, yet we have to include their cost, but they're not letting us use the revenues from there to help meet that, that ten percent or less. So, it's kind of an unfair request that the government, or that the Treasury's asking us to do. As far as the pensions plans, some of the things that we've done, and this is, this is the reality of it, we closed a pension plan. The Defined Benefit Plan, it's unfunded, the one that we're talking about right now, we closed that in two thousand. Almost nineteen years ago, we've closed it, yet, and I don't know what else you do. I mean, if, if somebody tells you to stop, you know, cut your, your costs down, what do you do? You're going to stop the bleeding? And that's what we did twenty years ago. We also transferred, we had two pension systems. The police and fire had a pension system that had been around, and we closed that and moved the monies to MERS, saving probably two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in administrative costs. It just didn't make sense to have two plans like that, so we put them into MERS, and we're able to achieve better efficiencies of scale, so we did that. We've worked with MERS to extend the amortization schedule. That's the number of years that you have to pay off that loan, that hundred and fifty-five million dollars. So, we've worked with them, and we're able to extend that, which helps out our, our annual payments. And then, we have, over the last three years, we've made an additional three million dollars contributions into what we call the New Surplus Division. The council had approved that in January of this year. We created a new division at MERS. It's called a surplus division, and we've been trying to put more money into that. We've put in about three million dollars right there. So, we'd be able to use that to offset some of those higher annual required contributions down the road. The corrective action plan, when we look at this, when we talk about the corrective action plan, is that we will continue to make annual required contributions as established by the valuation. And again, you saw some of those numbers going up. That may be a little difficult to do, but we're going to continue, that's what our plan is going to do, is continue to do that. We get to the point where we can do it, you know, I guess we're going to have to go back to the state if they're going to put, require us to do this. We will continue to make those additional contributions if we can, if future budgets permit. And that's the same thing with Number One, we'll make those contributions. As long as the budget permits us to do them, we're going to try to continue to make those. The other thing we can do, that other hundred and fifty, or sixty-nine employees that are currently in a DB plan, contracts are coming up next year, we'll set at the table, we'll see if they're willing to negotiate lower multipliers, lower final average compensation assumptions, see if they'll change their plans. But in reality, those hundred and sixty-nine will have very little effect on this unfunded liability, even if we were to get them to agree to it. And I don't know that they would. So, I know we, we can look at that and, and say, you know, the ship's sinking, or it's still half-floating. We can say, we can take a look at, you know, the glass half-full or half-empty, you know. I, I think we're still making progress. We've done a lot of good things to try to control that unfunded liabilities. I don't know, there's not a whole lot we can do with the- I don't know, there's not a whole lot we can do with the retirees, or we can't do anything with the retirees, or with the actives, to change what our forefathers had done many, many, many years ago. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the retiree healthcare, that's, that's the other CC, the other plan. We have 183 active employees currently in the healthcare plan, 1,152 retirees and their spouses, for a total of 1,335 individuals that would be, that could be eligible for retiree healthcare. With the 183 active, they also have spouses and dependents, but they're not counted in the valuation, so what we're looking at is 1,335. The 2017 audit showed our healthcare costs, last year's cost about $9,000, $9,574, it's gonna, $74,000, it's gonna be closer to $10.5 this year. We're on a pay-as-you-go basis, pay-as-you-go with healthcare. And we basically, we pay, basically, we do, we pay them weekly. We get an invoice from them weekly, and we pay them weekly. That's how we pay our health insurance for all of our employees, weekly. So if we don't make a weekly payment, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield's gonna, what are they gonna do? You know, maybe cancel us if we miss more than one or two. So we make those invoice payments. Our unfunded liability is $272 million. That was the last take on that. We don't have any, what I call dedicated funding for that, and I'll refer, I'll talk about that in just a second. So basically, PA 202, it's a little bit different, we only have to be 40% funded, and we've got 30 years to do that. So 40% of $272 million is $130 million that we'd have to come up with in the next 30 years. Again, their annual required, or we could have an annual required contribution of less than 20%, or 12% of governmental funds, and again, governmental funds, revenues don't include the water and wastewater, however, we're accruing expenses from those two entities. We have no dedicated funding, and I say that, we don't have anything in a trust, because any funds that we have set aside for healthcare, which we do, we have an unfunded liability fund, and some of those funds are with AXA, and I think there's right around $2.2 million set aside for that, but it's not dedicated in a trust, so that the state and auditors don't look at it as being, since it's not in a trust, it's not really dedicated for that. The annual required, or annual required contribution, if you look at the government funds, is at 43%, so we don't, we don't meet that, less than 12%. So in both cases, you know, we're, we're not meeting the plan today. So some of the changes we've done to the plan, and then I'll talk about the plan itself, is again, we've closed this plan to all new hires in 2009. So no one since 2009, 10 years, I guess, it's been 10 years, will be eligible for retiree healthcare. They have another plan, it's called the Health Savings Plan, we contribute a little bit of money, I shouldn't say a little bit, we contribute some money in there, it's like a defined contribution plan, but we don't have the unfunded liability attributed to that. Since 2009, we've made numerous changes through numerous contracts, the copays, deductibles, cost sharing, they're all, and the thing is, it's affecting more of the active employees than it is those retirees. However, in 2017, we, we did, we had a lawsuit, the retirees, as an association, decided that, or took a position that they was going to challenge a change we made in their healthcare. We have about 20 healthcare plans in 2015, and we moved them all to the same plan we had. They got an injunction to the court, it took us three years, we got a settlement, we reduced it down to four plans, and the estimated savings from that is about $3 million a I say that estimated, we'll know from the audit this year, because June 30th of this year will not, have been the first full year that we've had those changes in place. So as far as the corrective action plan, sorry, this is Grant's talking about, corrective action plan, we had an actuary, our OPEB actuary, make a determination how long it would take, or not how long, how much we would have to contribute every year in order to get to that 40% funding level, and they came up with $973,000 more, almost a million dollars more a year than what we're already paying for normal costs. So our plan, it would be, if the budget would allow it, is to continue to make that additional $973,000. Now, keep in mind, as healthcare and assumptions change, they projected this out for 30 years, so things will change down the road. That number may go up and may go down. The chances of it going down are slim, chances of it going up are probably greater. So that, that is what our plan would be, to try to reach that 40% funding in three years, or 30 years. And again, we're gonna seek healthcare cost sharing changes with active employees, and again, we keep going to that active employee base to help offset all these unfunded liabilities from our, from the predecessors, from their predecessors, retirees. So some observations, I just kind of wanted to share with you, when you take it, take a look at this, not all local governments and bodies are the same, they're all either suburban, urban, the declining economy, they never took into consideration or the size of a retiree base, a fund balance, general government. When they put this plan together, they never, everybody was supposed to fit, one size fits all, and that just, that just doesn't work out there. So I'm, you know, we have a lot of frustration with that. The city has, we've never been required to show this liability on our balance statement until two years ago. This liability was never, in the history of government, they've never required unfunded liabilities for healthcare to be put on the balance statement until two years ago. It is a big deal, and, and we gotta let people know it's out there, and we, we need to address it, and we need to pay for it. But to put a mandate like this in place is unrealistic. So again, we're on a pay-as-you-go healthcare payments for our healthcare, we always have been, many, many, and probably 90% of the municipalities out there on a pay-as-you-go. Okay? Now, would you pay your car insurance 40 years out, or your utility bills 40 years out? You probably wouldn't, and I wouldn't, and nobody ever requires you to, but all of a sudden, we have to pay this, prepay basically, our, our healthcare for our retirees. And then the, the big question is, what happens? If the local government is not able to comply, what are they gonna do? There's nothing in the law that says there's any ramifications if you don't comply, other than you have to comply. Now, it is our position to take the numbers that we got from our actuary and use that as a plan, that we're gonna make an effort to try to comply with this PA 202, and that's what I have in front of you, and that means $973,000 more a year for our healthcare into a trust, and we will establish a trust also by July of next year, to actually have those dedicated monies put into. And we'll try to make those contributions, as, as the budget will allow, for the pension costs, as I've outlined. And with that, oh, shoot me.
Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor, okay. Counselor Mill? Hi, good evening, Dennis. I have a couple of different questions, and then a little statement about something you mentioned. On the OPEB benefit, this initial contribution, I don't remember from our budget, is this something we have budgeted for in fiscal year 19, or will we be putting this in the fiscal year 20 budget next year for this?
Yeah, we, we would put it in for the budget, because our plan will, in our plan, we're telling the Treasury, because that's who we have to report to, that we will put a trust in place on July 1 of 2019, and in that trust, we'll put that $973,000 in.
Okay, our requirement right now is to present the plan to the Treasury to begin our next fiscal year.
That is correct.
Okay. Question on MERS?
Well, actually, I want to take a step back. Once we submit our plan, and they approve the plan, we have 180 days. Now, we can ask for a request to move that out if we have to, but it's, it's gonna be six months from the time they approve the plan, it'll probably be sometime in December, so we're really gonna be close to that window that we're shooting for.
Okay. Currently, under MERS, we make our contributions, you showed that we have assets there and that we're unfunded to a certain amount. MERS is a combination of many municipalities.
Correct.
And currently, all the municipalities are able to, MERS pays out 100% of the benefit that's been promised on the defined benefit programs.
That is correct.
As this, everyone has to submit these plans and attempt to reach their full funding. If MERS is pooling all the money, and somebody else, say Dearborn, falls way shorter than we do, MERS will continue to pay Dearborn's retirees 100%. If something happened and MERS could not pay out all benefits, how, how has that currently worked out? Is a well-funded city able to keep paying 100%? Are they gonna tell Dearborn alone they have to pay less, or is it suddenly gonna be, we gotta chop 10% off everybody's pensions that is guaranteed through MERS?
I don't think MERS pools, they keep those funds segregated, they have a fiduciary responsibility to do that, so they aren't using funds from one community to pay another community's benefits. It's pooled investment, but they aren't mingling those funds, so.
So our account is ours.
Ours is individual, yeah. We don't, we don't commingle our benefit payments, our funding ratio, they just pool the investments when they're investing the money.
Okay, great. Last question, on the OPEB benefits, the settlement in 2017. Correct me if I'm wrong, that has a duration of seven years.
Correct.
At the end of that time, there could be changes, there could be no changes.
Correct.
But that, at present, we're, we're basing the plan on what is the present amount of OPEB under the settlement.
That is correct.
Okay. Something I'm sure you know, but I wanted to mention it so some of the other council members might be, the, the fact that you mentioned how these benefits have to be accounted for now on our balance sheet, I just wanted everybody to know, this is the exact same approach the US Congress took with the US postal system, that is causing them to post multi-billion dollar deficits, because they're asking them to do the same thing, account for all their future benefits in each current fiscal year budget they have. And so when you say it doesn't really work, we have a pretty sterling example of it not working.
I agree. I agree. A lot of mandates without any support, and I actually in the plan, I had, and I shouldn't, I had thought about putting something in, yeah, we can meet those mandates if you increase our state share revenue, I mean, that's one, that's part of the plan, it's your plan, and you giving us some more money, so.
Well, the Gatsby rule that made us list those liabilities in our audit technically did not change anything. It shows on your balance sheet that you have this huge liability, but that liability existed anyway. So technically, you're just showing what it is, which in and of itself isn't a bad thing, because, you know, it's important to know what's out there, but really, in my view, the state should recognize that it's most important to know what's out there for communities that have never changed anything. Didn't change anything like we did, that would continue to accrue additional costs annually as more and more employees were added to that. So like Dennis said, it's, they didn't take into account any differences in community. There are a number of them. I mean, there are a lot of, particularly townships, that don't have a lot of liability in their area, and they still have pensions, or still offer retiree healthcare. For a city like us to do that, would have, we would have been putting ourselves in a worse and worse position if those changes hadn't been made. But they were made, so there aren't very many communities in Michigan that will meet that OPEB pre-funding requirement that is in this legislation. Some of them would meet the pension one, for sure, that would be more common, there are communities that are above 60%, but the OPEB, there are very few that are, that have any money set aside for those costs.
Counselor Moore?
No. Five years ago, I, I remember sending emails out about unfunded liability, and I looked at the numbers then, and I said then, said then, that if we got the police and fire men, and we change some stuff, that we can move. From five years ago to now, have we gained any grounds, or are we still at the same level or worse? I guess that's my question.
So you, what you did in moving the police and fire pension to MERS is, you read, Dennis mentioned you're saving $270,000, $300,000 a year. Those funds were not paid out of our general fund directly, that comes out of the investment fund. So you are saving that amount of money within the fund annually, and probably getting better returns as well. The average return over the last 20 years in MERS has been higher than what we were getting with that fund. However, this is a problem with almost every community in the state of Michigan that has MERS as well. You pay what the actuary tells you to pay, and that's the ARC, the annual required contribution. So I'm, I'm with the city, and I'm on two other boards that are local units of government that are part of MERS, and each of those occasions, each of those three organizations of city, and the other two pay their ARC, but the funding level has decreased or remain the same. So what you see now is that MERS does realize that, I think, some of their actuarial assumptions may not have been correct. So now, every two years, we get new actuarial assumptions from MERS that significantly increase that ARC. For instance, would be life expectancy, or rate of return are two of the most significant ones. So maybe they overestimated the rate of return in their valuation and underestimated the lifespan or life expectancy. So they're making those changes. It seems like every couple of years, we get new changes, which probably the first seven or eight years, as with the city, they never changed. So they likely had the same assumptions for a dozen or more years, and now they're making changes. What that impacts us is, we also used to have in our actuarial valuations, a table that showed, this is what you're going to pay for the next 20 years, this is what you're gonna pay every year for the next 20 years. MERS stopped having that probably seven or eight years ago, and they never really said why, but my, my thought is because they planned on changing these assumptions, which will change your ARC annually. That's why it's important for us to manage our finances now, where we should build up savings, and we should reduce costs in other areas, because that's gonna increase in the future. And we do, we do wanna get a higher level of, of funding in the pension particularly, so that's just some of the things we're dealing with in that area that you mentioned, Counselor Moore.
So have we started negotiating or talking to, talking to our politicians about where we are, are we, you know, I'm always asked, are we moving forward with the conversation of, like, like you said, Dennis, what we gonna do? You know, you got your hands up, it's the same thing. Are we moving forward to try to rectify, it's not time, gotta wait the budget, what we doing?
No, I mean, it, it's time, and there, in my view, both the pension and the OPEB issues are a statewide issue.
Yeah.
Because you see that these costs, the city of Saginaw had nearly 100,000 people at one time, and that's- and that's when a number of these costs were accrued. We had a larger workforce, and now that's in the retiree group that Dennis showed. So, when it comes time to pay for those costs, now we have half as many people set to pay the costs that were accrued when we have larger... A larger population. So, where have a number of those people moved to? Other communities in Michigan that didn't... Don't have that same level of costs. And you understand that that occurred, and you probably have heard it, "Well, I'm going to move where the taxes are." They're typically townships, and they won't have those OPEB and pension liability issues. However, at some point, you have to think that that should be a... There should be a statewide solution to that. It was probably at least five years ago now that the mayor and I worked with MML and the Treasury to... No, we had... MML did set up the meeting, so we had a meeting with Treasury, and they had a lot of reasons why the state couldn't be involved. But I think that is something that we should continue to push, particularly through MML and other councils and the Urban Corps Mayor's Group as well because it's typically the urban core cities that would have the higher liability because of the shrinking population and other issues. So, I think it is something that we do need to continue to push, particularly at a statewide level.
Okay. Councilwoman Bryant? Tim, have... Do we get any information regarding that from the National League of Cities at all? Because I think like in the Rust Belt... Because if you look at Michigan, it's very indicative of Detroit, Flint, and Saginaw. Saginaw is very unique in how much we have out there. But I agree with what you said. A lot of people go to those townships and villages who don't. So, we're kind of left holding the bag. But I would be interested in what National League of Cities has because I can imagine, as well as it being a statewide problem, you go to Ohio, the other places, you may run into something like that. But Michigan, with the MML, there is a website, Save My City. We just got it on there. So, it talks about municipal finance and how it's broken.
Yeah, there... I haven't noticed as much the National League of Cities, but it is a national issue. If you look at any of the audits for a lot of cities, the city of Chicago, for instance, has hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of OPEB costs and pension costs that are outstanding. The... Some of the bankruptcies nationally... The city of Stockton, California, that bankruptcy was related to pension costs and some bonding that they did to pay for those pension costs. Ironically, if you try to manage the situation, we're in... We're at a point where we have to issue these plans. The city of Detroit doesn't have to issue that because they never really, in my view, attempted to manage it and declared bankruptcy, and those costs were reduced by the bankruptcy court. So, it's... That's another point that I think goes into the basket when this becomes a statewide issue.
And Flint was in EFM.
Yeah.
National League of City is meeting in November, albeit that conference. There was something on there about the OPEC laws. I will make sure that we get some copies of some stuff ahead of time, and we can also start tapping. And we talked about being a part of the core mayor...
Urban Corps.
The Urban Corps Mayor's. And I think that that... I might say it's going to be a quick fix solution, but I think that at least if we began to talk about it at the tables... Like you said, it is a statewide thing. It's just everybody's going through it. It's not just us. It's everybody. And I know that... I know that at last meeting that I went to last week down in Lansing, that was a hot topic. OPEC and all it is, unfunding liability is really a hot topic. I mean, people was like, "What we going to do? What we going to do?" It's like, I'm sitting there, and I didn't realize that we were there again. And so, you know, I think that, yeah, it's time for us to start bringing in the big guns and start letting the big guns help us or at least give us some ideas on where we need to be going.
Correct. And you know, and I... You know, not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, we've done... We have done... We've been very responsible, the city of Saginaw, closing the plans, negotiating with retirees, negotiating with the actives. There's not a whole lot more we can do. But it's there. It's been there. We inherited it. And, you know, we're dealing with it. I mean, what more can you do? Close the plans, and we did it. And we did it 20 years ago on one and 10 on the other. And, you know, that's... So, we're just dealing with that unfunded liability, and we'll pay it as we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Jordan or the manager?
I've got some questions and comments, just a few. I don't want to keep... Be redundant on some of the things we heard before, but, you know, this is a problem. You're talking about a state issue, and the state allows people to be employed in cities. They don't have to live in the city. You know, it seems like they fighting us on both ends. You know, because those people not paying the same amount of taxes. You know, I don't like the fact that people work in the city and don't pay the same amount of taxes that I have to pay when I live in the city. I don't like that. So, maybe we need to start legislating some stuff. The cities need to get together and start legislating some things to help out the cities instead of worrying about the states doing it. I mean, we... Like this... The city manager said, you know, people that come here and retire or work here, then they move to a community where they're paying low taxes. You know, you want the money to take care of yourself, but you don't want to help out the city that you live in. That's not fair to us for the people that have to stay here in the city. I think we're going to have to... Eventually, we're going to have to raise the tax cap in the city of Saginaw. It's the only thing we can do to help ourselves out. If we don't, we're going to drown. You know, we're going to enclose ourselves. So, I don't know how we get this conversation going or do the city council have to do it? Do the city manager mention it? Or how do we get this back on the ballot to raising the tax cap? I would like to have some information on that. Mr. Manager, you can help me out with that any kind of way. Do we have to just do it ourselves as a city council? Can the management help us out or what? I'd be willing to campaign for that because I know it need to be done. So.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, and that concludes the management update.
All right. Next, Councilwoman...
We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Leave room for exceptions.
It's unloaded.
Support. Are there any exceptions?
Yes, 12 and 13.
12 and 13. Are there any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda without 11 and 12? Was it 11 and 12?
12 and 13.
12 and 13. Leaving 12 and 13 for later. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Councilwoman Clerk?
Okay, item number 12. Approve the purchase with Michigan Pipe and Valve for $97,890 for fire hydrants for the Maintenance and Service Division, Councilmember Balls.
Yeah. Why do we have to buy almost $100,000 for fire hydrants? And we already got fire hydrants that's working. Are you planning on these busting, or you just want to have these in stock?
No, they do. I mean, on average, we replace probably anywhere from 50 to 70 fire hydrants a year. I mean, the system's old. We talk about OPEB and other liabilities, but we... I think on average, and I don't know the years anymore, but the age of our water systems, I think over 80% of it, 70 or 80 years old or older, which includes the fire hydrants. And I don't know the exact number, but there's somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 fire hydrants probably in the city. So, annually, we go... Sometimes you try to operate them. And, you know, we got to winterize them every year. Some of them, you're breaking valves, you're breaking nuts, you're breaking, you know, gears and different things in them. So, some of them are so old, you can't repair them. You just have to take them out and replace them. So, this is the, on average, what we replace annually just through our maintenance programs.
So... But have any of them broke? I mean, totally broke on us and caused us problems? I mean, could we skip a year, every other year?
No, no. This is a fire suppression, safety situation, so.
I'm familiar with those type of systems. But I'm just saying, I was wondering. I mean, it's a lot of money. Okay. I accept your answer for that. But how about the other one?
Same thing. System is annual parts that we need for the replacement of the systems. Water service boxes, different... It says a pertance is, but it's different parts that are needed annually to maintain the system that we have.
Now, do these come out of the water fund?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Both of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm not going to... You know, since us worrying about that, damn, it's coming out of that fund. So, do retiree money benefits programs, that come from out of the water fund for the people that work in those departments? Or do the city just pay that?
Yes. Wherever you work, that's where it's paid from. Rubbish, water, wastewater.
And those are really sovereign funds? I mean, we got a lot of money in those funds. They don't seem like they're going to be drying up?
Well, water and wastewater are related to the fees. So, the OPEB costs and pension costs are part of that fee for water and sewer that you pay. Same with rubbish.
Do we take retirees' money out of those funds too?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other council persons? Okay. Councilman Balls, would there be a motion?
Yes, yeah. I'm making a motion to accept 12 and 13.
Support. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Boards and Commissions and Committee Reports.
Are there any reports any council has on their boards or commission that the members of?
I will report. Last week, the Planning Commission met to approve case J00816, and that was for the plan to put a vascular clinic next... Right across from Covenant Hospital. There's two houses that are located on the property, but the doctor came for the second time. The first time, they gave a presentation that didn't meet the requirements for a farm-based code and zoning. So, then they revised their plan. We met last Tuesday, and we approved that case that they met the recommendation. So, what would be formerly the old... Now, right across from Covenant Hospital, if you look at the two parcels that are there, that will be a vascular clinic, and they have been approved to have construction done within nine months. So, that'll be joining us. That's my report from the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Millen?
The former hot and now property and both big large buildings?
It's right next to it. It's not that property. It's... There's two houses. I don't have to address them.
Oh, the two houses, right.
Yeah, they're two homes. So, those will be torn down. They've already been purchased well before they came to the Planning Commission. The owner is a doctor at Covenant. He's a vascular surgeon. So, he'll be performing surgeries there. They typically have the same type of design in his other two locations. He has one in Midland and I believe one in southern Michigan. I'm not sure. But they wanted to do... They wanted to keep everything the same. Same thing, whether you walk in one in Southfield or you walk in one in Midland, and that would not meet those design guidelines. So, we had them come back, and the Planning Department worked with them. And this is another plan, which method is required. So, a lot to do with drainage and a couple of other things. So, kind of minutia details, but I know that some of you guys do attend the Planning Commission, so I just wanted to provide an update for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. What another question? I'd like to thank Monsanto for sending us the update list on boards and commissions that council people were on. Prior to us redoing our flow, our bylaws or how we run, we talked about there'll be some opening positions, and how soon are we going to fill those positions with a council person so that we can move forward to the next year? So, I guess we need to... Do we need to talk about it?
Well, we may, but this may not be the right time for it.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, normally, everything is get a committee. So, I guess I'm asking the question, are we going to start looking at it now? I'm not saying let's make some decisions. I'm saying let's start.
I think you're referring to the Council Rules of Order and the recommendation or request that all council members participate on a commission or board?
At least one, right.
At least one. If everyone hopefully has read the council rules from... Or approved at the last meeting, that's one of the things that we're asking every council member to do. It'd be at least... Be on at least one committee or board or a commission. Two, if you'd like. But we are asking for that just that we... It's an involvement issue. You are involved in the city, and that helps keep us council informed when you make your reports. I think that's what Councilwoman Moore is referring to.
Do you have to fill out the application for those too?
Yes. Any commission, board, or committee does need to have the application filled out individually for each one.
Who approve applications?
There's a committee of the mayor, myself, and...
City manager.
City manager.
I think we need to go... I'm sorry.
Yes. All right. Go ahead.
I think we need to go back to the old way. When I first came on council, did it. I'm not saying that the city manager shouldn't be a part, but we all... We got together and rotated to where every council person was a part of their team to decide about boards and commissions. And it wasn't just left solely on three people. It was like everybody got to put their input. But we did like... I think it was... I started off... It started off three, then you rotated down every six months, but we changed it. And they said we changed it because we didn't get applications. And now I think we're starting to get applications. I think... Because so, a lot of these boards and commissions, I started to get filled up, so.
Well, there was... As I recall, there was... The committee was appointed or designated because of a couple of reasons. One, the difficulty in trying to get enough people together with the council... But also because council always has the last say on any council appointments. At the time, when it come before the council, if council members don't think it's appropriate, that's the time to object. The committee only recommends having vetted the person for that particular position. That's all the committee does. They're not approving them. If it's a mayor orial appointment, the mayor appoints and can do it without regard or the manager if it's a manager's appointment. So, it's the ones that require council approval. Still, any council person has an ability to object and make the reasons. So, I'm not sure we want to go back to something that was not proven very effective or efficient. Councilwoman Millen?
I just wanted to be clear. Councilwoman Moore seems to be mentioning two separate things. We have an election coming up where we're going to have new council members join the council, and we will be ourselves electing a new mayor. Some of the vacancies mentioned here are... Include mayor or his designee. And so, until we have the new members and a new mayor, we really aren't in a position to move forward on the mayor or council member positions generally. I have applied for one vacancy that will open up before the election and after the end of the term of one of the council members, so. So, but in general, we can't change anything until we have the new council seated in November.
Well, there are those, if there's vacancies, council can always appoint.
Right.
And I think our clerk will keep us informed of those vacancies as they're available. And if it's available, we would certainly ask council members to approve it or to make the application. And the other thing is remember, it takes a little lead time from the time the application is filed to the time that it can be filled. So I, I would, I would encourage council members to continue to look at those vacancies where there's a council appointment.
Okay.
I think at the core of what the discussion was, was just that to encourage our fellow colleagues to join a board or commission. That was at the heart of, I think, part of the discussion.
Thank you.
And that's the key. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Appointment of Board, Commission and Committee Members.
Which is what we're talking about. We have a council reappointment. We're seeking approval of council reappointment of Timothy Morales to the MBS International Airport Commission with a term to expire October 31st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, next is the, Madam Clerk, you usually read them, I think, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah. And, and we have made the addition of a council reappointment of Greg Branch to the MBS International Airport Commission with a term to expire October 31st, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, why, why that position don't go to any current people on the city council?
This, Mr. Beck?
That is a citizen appointment.
Okay.
There, there is a council position on the commission that I believe will be coming to the council in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. Mr. Madam Clerk?
We are now at resolutions. We have one this evening. Is to approve the revocation of the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate, number 3-12-0019, granted to James Brookle for 126 North Franklin Street.
Is there a motion to adopt?
It's on the move.
Is there a second? Support. Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, Councilman, no.
I just wanted to clarify, that is the building we're discussing, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
Takes us to motion miscellaneous business. We do have an item here to authorize the city manager to issue a letter of support for first word community centers' participation in the In Vision Center Pilot Demonstration Initiative.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Any discussion? Councilwoman Moore?
As long as we fix the necessary corrections in this letter.
Well, the, the motion is to allow the manager to issue a letter.
I'm sure he will have that letter.
We all for it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would, before we go to the next item, Madam Clerk, I would like to interject. I understand we have a high school student here named Chaz. Or he gone? Oh, oh.
Gone.
Oh, no.
We're going to recognize him.
He's gone.
Oh, well, that's too bad. Maybe he knew we were going to do it. Yeah, he was from Reese High School. Yeah, doing a, uh, city council attendance. I believe that's one of the requirements for some of the classes. And we've had some others before and we try to recognize them, so we were going to do that. All right. Madam Clerk?
Next item is possible motion consideration for a closed session to consider material exemption from discussion or disclosure by state or federal state.
Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing. Oh, that's, that's all right. Roll call.
For a closed session, we need roll.
Yes. All right. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench is absent. Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes.
Mayor Browning is absent. Pro temp plot.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.